Good evening and welcome to the City of Isani Committee of a Whole Meeting for Tuesday, September fifteenth. I'd like to call this order to, yeah, I'd like to call this meeting to order if we can all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Is there any public comment at this time? No public comment. We'll move on to the committee meeting items. Number one, the Public Works updates. Mr. Sylvester.
Mayor Johnson, the members of City Council for Public Works updates. For streets, we have street painting of crosswalks, stop bars, school crossings, railroad crossings of parking lots was all completed. So every other year, everything gets painted and this year, everything got painted. For storm, crews repaired a storm drain out East Dual in front of UPS. The repair required a new casting to be installed there as well as some curbing to be replaced. For sewer, the annual maintenance of air release falls have been completed for the third time. This is part of our quarterly maintenance that we do on those. Sewer jetting has begun. This year, we'll be jetting to each lift station and cleaning the lift station itself. We jet primarily to prevent the sewer backups in the system but also to inspect the infrastructure itself. Generator pads have been poured and the generator installs should be starting soon and this work is going to be completed in October. And actually today, we had two generators show up. One is set at Rum River Drive by Councilman Lundin's house and the other was on Arabian. So they're in place, set in place, they're not wired in or nothing like that, but they're there if you want to take a look at them. For water, staff worked through some filter issues at the water treatment plant. It was discovered that the filters were low on potassium permanganate, which was causing our manganese levels to rise in the system. The permanganate is what the iron and manganese attaches to so that it can actually be filtered out in the filter. So what we had to do is we had to shock the filters with that permanganate, let them sit for a day or two, and we backwash them before putting them back in use again. Staff cleaned out the backwash tank, which is also part of some manual maintenance we do at the water plant. Gives us an opportunity to take, to discard all the iron and manganese that is filtered out during normal operation. Before flushing, staff verified that all the gate valves in town were open and it was discovered we had eight valves around town in random places that were, that were closed. So they were opened up before flushing. And flushing, hydrant flushing was completed with a small list of hydrant repairs that got done. The sledding hill is, has begun, should be completed in late September, weather permitting. So it's where, I would say it's, we're probably six feet high right now on the sledding hill that started it yesterday. So we got a good start on that. Crews have been fogging for mosquitoes and continue through September. Staff was able to pour concrete curbing at Rum River Metals Park and that's the last park that's going to get that concrete curbing around the outside of it. The compost site is open and continues to be busy. The compost site Sunday hours will begin in October, on October twenty-fifth with the compost site closing on November eighth for the season. The community garden is slowing down, but the sunflower maze is in full bloom. So if you go out there, the sunflower plants in that northwest corner, there's an actual small maze to go through there, so it looks really cool. The farmers market is open through September twenty-fifth and that's what I have for Public Works.
Awesome. Want to state again, Public Works did an awesome job. After clean up after the last three dance, did a great job again.
Thank you. Pass that on to the guys.
It's amazing that you have a street dance and you see at eleven o'clock and you clear the streets and there's cups and a few paper products and, it's like my mic cut out there for a sec. Did we have them here, by the way? Okay. You know, it didn't look bad, but you could definitely tell something went on and, and literally, the last person left and here come, you know, Public Works and they're coming in in big machinery and trucks and it was, I drove through there the next day and I was like, did, did we even do anything last night? It was phenomenal. Moving on to the council, I hope you guys are ready to get in that toboggan and go down the hill this winter for the grand opening of it.
I'll watch you.
Oh, no.
No, no.
I'll even help you get on it.
Councilman Collison should be a friend being of the sledding hill.
That's going to be his ribbon cutting deal.
Yeah, I agree.
That was his big deal.
No park, Councilman Collison, this was your idea, so you cut that ribbon, I'll just stand next to you. And all, you, you get all the credit because it was your idea, your build. We just, as a team, thought it was a good idea, so.
I'll go down the tobogganing hill, so.
That, that a boy, Councilman Burgley. Councilman Gordon's and I already know, so is Councilman Collison. We just got to work on Councilman Lundin.
Yeah, good luck with that.
We'll drag, we'll drag him kicking.
You better have, you better have Chief Jankovic at the bottom with a stretcher for me.
Let's tie a rope to his leg, he won't know that.
What was that they used to give Mr. T before they'd get him to fly?
Oh, yeah, they sedated him.
Yeah.
We'll just sedate Councilman Lundin.
Yeah, right.
Like Mr. T. I pity the fool. Good work, Mr. Sylvester. Any questions, comments, or concerns to Mr. Sylvester by the council? All right. Moving on to E2, the pedestrian bridge, new information and discussion. This ought to be interesting.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. So as you may recall, at the January twenty twenty goal setting session, it was up for discussion of whether the council wanted to proceed with looking into that project as it had been kind of on the reoccurring list. Council at that time unanimously decided that, no, we had other things we wanted to consider. However, I got recently new information, received an email from the Federal Highway Administration Division, Central Finance Office, that they wanted to know what we were going to do with the funds that were still allocated to that project. To our knowledge, Mr. Cook and myself, that money and those funds were not available anymore. However, per her email, and we did confirm, are you saying they are available if we want to move forward? She said, yes. It's in the amount of two million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand and seven hundred and ninety-five thousand. So just to give a brief summary of what Mr. Cook had presented in January goal setting was that we would need to approximately come up with about two point two million dollars of local funds to cover the cost beyond what he and his team anticipated that we could get. Now that's all subject to what can we get and we'd have to really evaluate what grants are available come this term again, as that work was done last year. However, of what he had suggested or said might be possible of coming up with those funds for local, our local share, per se, that might cover most of it. So at this time, I'm inquiring with council, do you want us to look into this further if those funds are still available? Because at the time we did discuss it, we were under the impression that we had quote unquote, given those back.
So the bridge would cost, I'm lost here, is it going to cost four million or two million?
Total, the bridge is going to cost a little over four million. There would be approximately two point one million dollars in federal funds, approximately just under two million that we could potentially get in other grant opportunities, leaving us with not a lot to have to come up with.
The only problem I have is now that the hotel's built there, that's where that bridge was all scheduled to go through. And now with the hotel being there, that's going to be a problem.
I believe the lot is where the hurricane car wash sign is.
No, it's got to come down right through, right alongside the hotel and then it would end because it, because the ramp has to be at such a grade for handicap.
Do you have that plan in front of you, Mr. Cook?
They curl them up.
Yeah, but they couldn't curl it to get the right grade for handicap. That's what that discussion was prior.
Can we actually use the projector for once and put that on the TV so we can all see it at once? Is that bad to do, Ms. Brooks? Is it hard to fire that thing up?
Nothing's too hard for Ms. Brooks.
No?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's fire it up. Let's show everybody here.
If we want to, we could potentially move on to other items while Ms. Brooks is getting that set up.
Absolutely.
Come back, circle back.
Yeah, let's circle back. Let's go to E3, mixed radio network participation. What this is, this was my item that I added. I had a, it's called mixed radio network, obviously. They do a podcast and a YouTube. So it's, it's sent out, the majority of it, you'd have to Google it in order to see it, but they put their videos on YouTube, they're very law enforcement advocate. I don't know if Chief Myers has ever seen this. Yes, you have. So they're huge advocates in public safety and/or law enforcement. And they wanted me to be a guest on their show as the mayor for the City of Isani. The date that they wanted was October sixth, which is a council day, so I had to decline. However, they, they did, they wanted to come to City Hall was the next question. So I wasn't going to step forward and do this show unless the council was okay with me representing the City of Isani in this council and/or inviting them to City Hall at that matter. So I wanted to check with you gentlemen, if you had any questions or concerns, by all means, throw them at me.
So how long is the show supposed to last?
It's a two-hour show.
And you said during City Council? So what do we?
Well, they wanted to do it October sixth.
Which is a Tuesday, right?
Which is a Tuesday. Their shows are always on Tuesdays, so their show will actually be on the air as we're in council tonight. But they wanted to do it October sixth and I had to decline that date because we would be in a council meeting. So then they said, well, do you have council meetings every Tuesday? And I said, no, just the first and the third Tuesday of every month. So then they said, well, what if we went the second or the fourth? And I said, well, then I, I could come do it. Well, what about coming to City Hall? I said, well, I, I'd have to check to see if that's okay, but, and then of course they joke, well, you're the mayor, what do you mean, you have to check? I said, it's, it's not how it works. But we chuckled, he said, yeah, I know, you, you do what you got to do and I'll do what I, I got to do, but I wanted to check with you guys to make sure that you were okay with me representing the city and, and this council at that matter. And would there be any objection to me going on the show or, or having it at City Hall for that matter?
I have no problem.
I think it's your call. I don't know anything about them, I guess, but.
You should watch it.
Yeah, I'll check it out.
Probably make a call to the city attorney too.
We did.
Did you?
Yeah.
I can speak on behalf of what the city attorney said. I'll take it in two pieces. One, about using City Hall space, chambers or anything that's a city facility, he did not recommend it. He said it's not a good use of public, a public facility which taxpayers pay for because you'd be speaking on behalf of them and their money would in essence be going towards that. The other issue, he said, that is if there were other people who want to do a podcast here, how would, do they turn them away? Because having something in our chambers room specifically that is not for the good of everybody, like for example, even a political campaign, we have a policy against that. So he said that he would not recommend that. He also cautioned against Mayor Johnson speaking on behalf of the city because sometimes you get into, and not saying that this would happen, he said, but sometimes you get into situations where it kind of leads you down a path that you might take aside one way or another that may not be for the good of the entire city. So he would just caution on that.
I don't have any problem with it. I guess, you know, the city's, the attorney's recommendation is not to do it here, that would be, I would have to go along with that. Maybe in protection for him as representing the city, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to have Chief Myers there and Chief Jankovic there. Because those are both public, you know, safety things.
Which I did mention to the producer of the show, that if both chiefs were interested, I would definitely bring them along. This is a first Chief Jankovic is hearing about it, but I did say something to Chief Myers.
Yeah, I don't, I have no idea what you're talking about. This is a program or a podcast, I've never.
It's a mixed radio network, it's called. And they, they do it every Tuesday and they're huge in public safety, whether it's police, fire. Why is my mic keep doing that? I'm hearing it.
Yeah, that, right there, I hear that too.
Maybe it's because I'm spitting. I don't know.
I guess, you kind of, what, I don't know, what kind of questions are they going to ask? And do they have commercial breaks? If so, what?
They do, they, they do an hour and then they take a commercial break and they play music. And then you come on the other hour. It's kind of, you know, as a mayor, what's your opinion of this kind of thing? Which I understand what the attorney's saying, but I, I think I'm a little smarter than, than the average bear. I could definitely dodge a bullet.
I guess probably.
Or if I had the chiefs with me, they could dodge it for me.
You'd probably want to keep words out like we, the city, or me and the council.
We, us, or our.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, I'd hope you guys know I'm not a me, my, or I guy. I always say the team or us. We, our. Just a thought, something to think about, I guess. I mean, if the majority's not against me doing it, I.
I haven't heard from the other end.
I thought, I thought, I think you should do it.
I don't see any harm in it, to be honest. Especially if I'm dragging the chiefs with me. Or if they come here, I mean, the chiefs don't have to go very far that way.
He's still looking reserve. I wish I could see his face.
I'll fill you in later.
It's hard, it's hard to see what he thinks.
I'll need the, yeah, sorry. I'll, I'll look into it if you can give me some information on how to look them up.
Will do.
Yeah, listen to, listen to the show.
Yeah.
One time before you make final decision.
Absolutely.
I listened to it.
See what they're advertising on commercial breaks? If it's something we would approve of and.
I'd say it's fire.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, the scrutiny is, we all know, is police right now. So, I mean, I'm sure they're going to focus more on that, but having public safety there, period, whether it's police or fire, I don't particularly see any harm in having either or, or both of them.
I'm sad to see all of the heat that the Minneapolis Fire Chief is getting right now as well. So, I mean, obviously, it's, the, the big picture is PD, which is horrible, but it's even going into the fire departments.
Right. And that's what I mean, is, is we would be there to, to advocate for police and fire throughout the state. I mean, that's pretty much what the show is, is they, they support fire, police, any public safety entity. So, I mean, we're there to, to show them the City of Isani is strong and we support the state.
Sounds genuine to me, but I, I know I'm a little skeptical as I know things can really get spun up right now. It's a pretty sensitive listening group out there. Not going to be the focus of some repercussions because something got taken out of context.
I would like you to at least watch the show one time because I think when you watch it, you're going to say, this isn't at all what I thought. If there was any part of me that was one bit scared, I would not be wanting to do it either. But I'm not because I see how huge they are for public safety. They don't want to back you in a corner. I mean, if we just flat out say, yeah, we can't answer that, he'll, all right, let's move on to the next question. You know, he's not going to press you. I'll give you the link.
Okay.
Uh, let's move on to E4, Legacy Pines Third Edition Letter of Credit.
Thank you, Mayor. So we received a request for the developer. Gentleman is right here, so we'll be able to ask him some questions. I was dealing with the, he's with Everpine Holdings LLC, who's doing the Legacy Pines Third Edition. And he has the request that he'd like to be heard by council and it's in relation to their letter of credit. Per their development agreement, section thirteen, the developer shall provide a financial guarantee to the city in the form of a cash escrow and irref- ref- okay, I can't say that word, letter, letter of credit in an amount equal to one hundred and twenty-five percent of the estimated amount of the required developer installed improvements to be completed in the phases of the development. This agreement, or this writing that we have in the agreement is basically been followed with every agreement that we've had within the City of Isani, within policy. Allowing a reduced amount exposes the city to potential issues if the developer were not to install the improvements as planned. The one hundred and twenty-five percent is to cover expenses that the city had to take over and install the improvements themselves. The city attorney has advised against changing this policy. However, he is requesting to potentially go and do a reduced amount based upon the work that he's got completed and then evaluate. If we'd like to ask him to come forward, I think it'd be best to hear from him exactly what he's requesting and then we can discuss further.
Bob, right? Bob, you want to step forward up to the mic here? The mic is on. You're just going to speak into it.
You can drop your mask.
Anything the council would like to address to Bob? Speak now.
I'll let him blend to his feel.
All right.
Well, when this came up, I, I talked to Sheila about it and what it has to do with is, I think you guys remember, we just brought the third on and did a little bit different where we finished plating all the lots and then we phased it. So we're out there right now doing the first phase of the third edition and we're trying to decide if it makes sense to do the second phase. But with winter coming and everything, we're trying to make financial sense of it. So I, I brought this to Sheila saying, you know, this is, I understand, I would expect no less from your city attorney, what he said, I get that, but, you know, I think, you know, I think it's gone pretty well in my eyes, hopefully you feel the same. I think it's been good for the city. And I just wanted to come and see if you guys would be open to a little flexibility with that. And, and the third, the second phase is not, and Jason can speak to this, it's not, they're out there right now doing the first and if it all makes sense, we would just have them slide and do the second before winter. And it's not going to take long. That's why I don't feel what I'm asking for is asking for the moon. I think it's reasonable and, you know, if for, I mean, I get what he's thinking if, you know, we don't say, you know, if we don't do what we say, you know, but it's not like you guys don't maintain control, so to say, out there over me. I mean, you know, so I'm just here to see if we can figure something out.
Bob, I'm going to, I'm going to say one thing, and this happened before the building crash of the nineties.
I get it.
The City of Isani sat on a set of properties on the other side and they carried the bond on that thing. It never happened. There's nobody on this council but myself that was a hundred percent aware of that whole thing. Still to this day, we're paying it off.
I do, I do remember this, actually. I remember reading about this.
And we're still paying it off. And there was generally a lot of very ticked off residents.
Mm-hmm.
And I, for one, if I would have been on the council at this time, I would have never allowed that to happen. I would have never allowed a developer to put the city on the hook for that kind of money.
You could potentially walk away.
You, just, and that's what they did. They walked away, the city was stuck on it. It was all done in good faith. The guy was actually building houses to beat the band over there.
As well as yourself.
As well as yourself. And then all of a sudden, the housing market went woof, in the toilet. He walked away. And what's even dumber yet, the bank that he was tied in with hired him to sell that property.
Yeah, I can't speak for that.
And I just, I, it, that's leaving such a bad taste in my mouth. I'd be honest with you, if you do, I guess I wouldn't, I, I could, I could call it a hybrid type of letter of credit is, is, you know, you correct me if I'm wrong, the, the third edition, your letter of credit is to cover that whole third edition. You're doing it in phases. I could maybe possibly see us doing something if you got phase one has been done, phase two, but you don't do anything with the three, kind of do a hybrid thing on that, but you can't go any further than that until that letter of credit would be met in my eyes. Because I don't want this city on the hook to carry another debt like we did across the street that we should have never paid for.
I get it. I, I totally understand and, you know, but, I mean, the thing we're trying to make sense of is do we bring on, you know, these next thirty-two lots before winter? And, you know, again, I, I get what you're saying, we've all been through it.
Yep.
And, I mean, we've, we brought on a hundred lots there the last two years and I think Jason, hopefully Mike, I mean, we've done everything we said we're going to do.
And I, and I, and I want to tell you, I am so grateful that you've done what you've done. I'm, I'm in construction myself.
Yeah.
And I'm going to tell you right now, construct, we have, we haven't, the company I work for, we haven't slowed down one iota. The COVID nineteen ain't stopped us a bit. We're going just as strong, we're, it's a hit in that time of year where all we do is.
It's actually been better because everybody wants to buy a house and come out to Isani.
Yep. And so, as of right now, I see us having a very busy winter already. And.
I don't think it's going to personally stop you. I don't think it's going to slow you down, winter or not.
No.
I think you're going to keep marching.
But, but the thing is, I mean, you, you know, we just brought on the twenty, so we got twenty-eight lots there.
You know how fast those are going to go, Bob?
I'm, I'm just saying. And again, I don't think I'm asking for the moon, I'm not. Because we're talking literally three weeks. And, and if you guys are upset or we don't do something we say, I mean, don't, don't issue any more building permits out there. I mean, that, that'd be catastrophe for us.
Ms. Wood, you have something to add?
I would like to add one possibility of something. If we're looking at doing a hybrid of something and maybe trying to work out, you know, options here, is to consider breaking the letter of credit into two parts, one for utility and one for the other. And that seemed to be, that would be helpful, maybe not as helpful as Bob is maybe wanting, but that might be something where instead of getting the whole amount upfront, we get it in two installments, it keeps things moving along. And Jason can maybe speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah, I guess that was just a, an option that I kind of was bringing up on, to be able to keep the contractor rolling, it's kind of two separate crews, two separate processes to do the underground work and still get to a point where should everything fall through and stop, the surface work wouldn't be partially done where the city would be left on the hook having to finish it and then having to spend money on it. As opposed to if it was broken out as just covering the utilities and then not being allowed to continue on to the surface work until those utilities are done or we have that other letter of credit. But then, at least then, there's not going to be really a point where they're halfway through something that's not covered by a letter of credit. The topic of into the winter, we can't really pave after mid to early November, paving plants are shut down and our regulations are that it has to be a paved surface before they can build on the lot. And so he is kind of on a time crunch. If he wanted to get this done, he has to have gotten to the point where utilities are in, the curbs in, and he's managed to get that paved before that early November or it wasn't too beneficial for him because he wouldn't be to the point where he can start building on the lots. So he's motivated to get that all done, but it's just that topic of how, how you may want to break it down.
I'm, I'm in favor of doing something for you as so long as the city is not going to be stuck on the hook for anything. If it, if you went to twenty-eight lots and you decided to do twenty-nine, you're paying, you're, you're going to, you're going to be going to that other extreme and you're going to be paying out for that whole letter of credit at that point anyway. But if so long as the city is not going to be hooked on for anything, at that point, I have no problem with that. If it's, so however, you know, that would be Ms. Wood and Sheila's deal there.
And I think that we may, if we do even, if we do something like this and do it in steps and in the part one, part two, utility versus the other, I don't think we'd be on the hook, but we would not have a complete development, so to say, right? Would that be correct, Jason?
Correct.
At worst case, it's not that we would have to then put the road in ourselves, there would be no lot sold, it wouldn't really need a road. It just will look like it's kind of half done. Well, if we're willing to accept that, then this might be a plausible option.
Pretty much like, pretty much like it was when Legacy Park was put in.
Dirt road.
Just a dirt road where you had to walk a mile and a half to get there. I'd be for something like that and I think the attorney would understand, so long as we're not on the hook for anything. Because that's the last thing, I'm sure Councilman Gordon would stand up a hundred percent on this thing, we're still paying off on that crap over there across the street, highway. And sooner or later, that's got to go away too. And I, and that, which should have never happened. I don't care who was on this council. If I was on the council at that time, I would have fought and I would have actually literally walked out of a council meeting if somebody was going to pass that. Because I wasn't, I wouldn't allow that to happen.
I just, I just know, I sat in the seat January seventh of twenty nineteen and, and I said, no liabilities. I just, I just know, I sat in the seat January seventh of twenty nineteen and, and I said, no liabilities. And I've made that clear to everybody, no liabilities. And to me, this would potentially set us up for that liability unless we meet halfway.
And, and you know what, I totally understand that. I mean, you don't have to believe me, you don't know me, but telling you it's not going to happen. Within four weeks, it'll be done. And, and I would like to point out, we've got phase one. You know, they're done with, you know, they'll start the road. So, you guys are sitting on five hundred and eighty thousand right now of cash that, you know, in, in two weeks, phase one's going to be done. So, that exposure is not there and, and you've got all that sitting there.
And, you know, I guess the financial things, you know, I guess technically my approval or any of that element.
Yeah, I don't know who to look at.
Mr. Becker is the pearl in that one.
But on the construction element of, of the process, that's where, that's where this idea of, you know, the possibility of breaking that up, really does just allow that to roll then would be, you know, you already have the utilities in for phase one here. And so, those, those utilities are in. So, that portion of that letter of credit that you already have, you know, could be reduced already. It's just that the amount of utility on that first phase is, you know, significantly smaller.
You guys would roll that from one to two?
Well, I don't think they'll be able to get that managed by the next, this council meeting here, but-
No, no, I get that.
But yeah, the process that we've done on all these developments have been, the moment the utility is in or the improvement's completed, you can request a reduction in your letter of credit in the amount that's installed. So, in your case, you already have installed X amount of dollars worth of work.
Right.
And so, you would be able to request that reduction in that one already. And then if this next phase was only for the utility portion and you're able to request a reduction of that, when you get to that next step, when you're ready to do the surface work on phase one and now that's in, now that could get reduced or moved to the paving of the phase two.
You know, I, I could, I could live with that if, and you guys have been responsive to my reduction requests, I appreciate that. Because not everybody's like that. So, I mean, I, I could make that work if we could come to agreement.
I, I would have to lean real heavily on Mr. Becker, because that's his expertise.
So, financially, we can make it work to just say, we're basically splitting this letter of credit up into two, right? One is for utilities, once that's done, now we have a new letter of credit that is for the, the street work. We can make that work. It is really in the end about whether or not the council is comfortable with being, with that worst case scenario of the utilities are in and done, but now there's no road surface and no one's going to do it. And if the council is comfortable with that, then, then this works.
So, does that give us liability if, if it doesn't get done, is that what you're saying?
They're just going to take a dirt road into these properties.
There's not, at that point, there's not, I mean, because there won't be any homes, there won't be, you know, there's, there's no construction on there, there, there's no, no obligation. Yeah, there's no obligation at that point for the city to go in and complete the street work. I mean, you might, you might view that situation as, as, as less than desirable or a blight, but we wouldn't be obligated to complete the street at that point, there would be no homes there.
Wouldn't be nothing on or locked in that.
Yeah.
But if we were to do what, Jason and Mr. Becker, if we were to do the reduction from phase one tonight and apply that to phase two, does that still keep us compliant within our develop agreement? We don't need to amend that if that works for Bob?
Well, I just, I got to make sure I'm clear. So, let's just say, I don't, you know, however you have to do it procedurally, but let's just say, we agree. I'm talking about this is going to move fast, like I'll probably be back here tomorrow morning. So, like I bring all your city fees. What, what would you, based on what you guys are talking about, what would you guys want me to bring tomorrow for, for that surety part?
So, the only thing I don't have in front of me is what the amount that's already installed's value is from phase one. That amount would have to be determined, I guess, very quickly. And then there's going to be a difference though, because this phase one didn't have much on utilities because the sewer and water were actually already installed in previous phases or additions. And so, there are more utilities going in, so there would be a larger letter of credit than, than your ten percent number. But, you know, it would reduce this if, if you, you have the item.
Yeah, Sheila sent me that.
So, so this original kind of talking point was the, the first utility work, you know, should be two hundred and twenty-one thousand and change. You know, maybe you've already completed fifty thousand dollars worth of work out on site. And at which point, we would be able to take that off of this number because you would already have completed the work. But there's certainly more.
We don't have those numbers in front of us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know either.
So, perhaps if we go back to the other, what is the first recommendation, which is to split it into two parts for the city to work with, with him, we could put it on tonight for council if you wanted to take action. There's consensus from tonight, or from Cal, should I say? And then it would keep him moving along and since this is a time sensitive issue for him.
I want him to keep moving along.
Obviously, yeah.
He's, he's done great this far, but I, again, I just, that liability haunts me and I've read that, I've read what Councilman Lundin is talking about and it wasn't pretty across sixty-five. It was a nightmare and we're still paying on it and, and I'll be darned if that happens.
And then our residents are paying on it because they're paying on the utilities.
I get it. But, I mean, keep in mind, I mean, you've got, you guys have five hundred and eighty thousand dollars of cash that is sitting there and I'm not opposed to, to leaving that and rolling it if we can keep going and I just don't. See, the problem is, you know, we, we, we got to pay the bills, we got to, so in this case, you know, there's four hundred in, in true costs. We got to put up another hundred with you guys. And then we got city fees and then we got to pay the bill. I mean, you're talking, you know, a million dollars and, you know, it's like, you know, it's just doubling up and I'm just trying to figure out how we can all make sense of it.
If, if the rest of the council is, is in, on board with what Ms. Wood is, is suggesting, kind of went off of what I said.
Splitting it?
Splitting it. And, and like I said, there's, if there's a guarantee the city ain't on the hook for any of this, I'm a hundred percent for it. But I need that guarantee that we're not on the hook for this.
Okay, so I, I just got to be clear again, sorry, I'm slow. So, let's just say that this was the number and whatever it is. So, if we did the utility, so that's hundred and twenty-five, so we, you'd be looking at another two hundred and twenty-one thousand. When I come in, wanted to do this. And then in three weeks, when we're ready to do the streets, you'd want the other part. But then you're seeing that's where we could, you'd entertain a, a reduction from the first since it'll be done. And we could slide that from the first to the second. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we'd basically do it just like we did the last one, where it, it's just an accounting move, taking it out of that one, first L O, L O C and applying it to the second, yes.
Okay. I, I could live with that.
I would be for it and it's rest up there, four other guys here have got to make that vote decision.
Councilman Gordon?
Sounds good to me.
Councilman Bergley?
I'm for it.
Councilman Carlson? Let's push it forward to council then, so we can keep them rolling.
Okay, so this will take an amendment to their developers' agreement. So, I'll just write up something that not, I don't actually have the developers' agreement to amend this fast. However, we'll put it on as an item, a business item for discussion. You can make the motion and then authorize staff to make those changes and authorize staff and the mayor to sign after the fact.
So, would, would it be the amount then that Sheila's got in, in the memo? Is that, because I don't know if it'll be tomorrow, but it'd probably be Thursday. If I bring that in, is that?
That's something, Bob, you're going to have to, you're going to have to sit on with Mr. Becker and Ms. Wood and Sheila.
But I didn't know if you guys had to approve the exact amount, because I guess I would like-
You know, if Ms. Wood says what we got to do, what we got to do, I'm a hundred percent confident in what she has to say.
Okay.
We're good. I, it may possibly, we'll talk after, it may be, the engineer may be able to work up the numbers after the fact to give us, because it might even be less if some of that work has been completed. So, that won't affect the decision tonight. It's really the action of splitting the letter of credit.
Okay.
My counsel and myself firmly and truly believe in our staff, Bob. So, what they say is, is what's going to go.
But Bob, please don't take it to heart what I had to say. We got, we got burned. Is shame on, screw me one, shame on me. Shame on, second time, shame on you and I ain't going any further than that.
I get it.
So, I, I, please do understand, you've done an outstanding job, you're moving things along there. We're very happy for what you've done here. I, I, it's just that I cannot put this on our taxpaying citizens.
I get it, I get it. And, and just so you know, staff's been wonderful to work with, I appreciate it.
I don't doubt that for a second.
Thanks, Bob.
Ignore what he said, I don't doubt that for a second.
It wasn't my substitute in my place, no.
No, no, they have, they have been awesome.
I do thank you for listening and being flexible, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in, Bob. Let's move on to E five, the coaching funds for small businesses. We have Mr. Steve Fredland in the audience. Steve, if you wouldn't mind stepping up here, sir? And give this council your spiel.
The spiel, all right. Good afternoon, guys. Yeah, Steve Fredland, I'm the founder of the Small Small Business Community. We are a network of business coaches and experts that are committed to helping small businesses. We are a global organization. We have coaches and clients on six countries across three continents, but we are headquartered right here in central Minnesota. And understandably, a lot of the funding that's been happening has been going to help small businesses stay open. That is fantastic. But what we're talking about is trying to help them actually get through the COVID, get through the, the pandemic now with new strategies. Maybe get more online, increase their revenues, reduce their expenses, in some ways, sometimes even reinventing themselves. So, what, to do this, they need training, they need business coaching. This is what we do, this is what we do all over the world. So, we've been helping people individually, but as the impact sort of lingers on here with COVID, what we're looking for is a few communities to really work with closely. Where we can go in and work with a bunch of small businesses at once, help the business community and in turn, revitalize the communities that they're in. We've done a lot of research, we've had a lot of discussions about how the, the link between small business success and community vitality is super strong. And so, we're, we're trying to, to leverage that. So, I did send you guys a proposal, hope you had a chance to look at it ahead of time. But basically, proposals for twelve thousand dollars, which would help twenty small businesses in the city of Isani. It would give them four hours of one-on-one private individual coaching, as well as ongoing connection with a coach and a lifetime membership at our website where they get more content, connections and resources and all of that sort of stuff. So, it's, it's a brutal time, you guys know, for a lot of small businesses. We believe that we can help them not just survive, not just help stay open for another month or two, but actually thrive during this environment by, by looking at their, their business model and their strategies. So, as part of our community revitalizes, right, revitalization program, the cities that participate will be recognizing them, we've got a podcast as well. We, we highlight what's going on in those cities, their businesses, their leaders, all of that sort of thing. So, this is something that we're doing. So, we've got clients all over, we're doing them individually, but we're really trying to get into a few cities and say, all right, what can we do for that city by, by helping their small businesses? So, that's my spiel.
Any questions or concerns from the council?
Ms. Wood, can that money come out of that COVID relief fund?
It says number six here, Councilman Lundin, if you read it. It says CARES Act funding in form of grants for small businesses and it explains it. And I could answer that, yes.
Yes, so Mayor, Councilmember Lundin, it can come out of CARES Act funding. However, we do have funding already allocated. Potentially, we can wait till the very end to see if there's anything remaining that was unspent because items that were being purchased came in less than anticipated because some of those numbers are estimated, because not all those purchases have been made quite yet. That's possible, but as it stands right now, we do have those budget, those items already, or the funds already allocated to what they're to be spent on. The last remaining funds we discussed last council meeting were divvied up between the fire district and the small business grant program. So, it's potentially, maybe if we don't have the grant funds completely used, if those have extra funds, we could maybe allocate towards this. However, I will say, we have a lot of applications coming in. I would be surprised if we don't run out of funds, but it's possible.
I have a question. So, are, are you working with the North sixty-five chamber?
We are.
So, is, would this overlap? I mean, we're not using, we wouldn't be using our funds, it wouldn't be a dual purpose here or it wouldn't be an overlap, would it?
Right, no. Well, we're actually, we're working with them in terms of promotion and helping get the businesses on board with this thing. They do not have to be a chamber member to be part of this. The requirements would be they'd have to be in the city of Isani, have a brick and mortar, be less than fifty employees. We're working with the chamber just to help promote this, this plan and help the businesses realize it's out there. So, Cambridge last week has approved, we're working with the North sixty-five chamber to help businesses, you know, jump out, jump and grab hold of this thing there. But there's not overlap in terms of a program. If that answers your question.
Yeah.
I just have to find out where we get the money for, for this.
Yeah, if we don't have any remaining CARES Act funds, then it would be an unbudgeted expense and that'll be a mic question to determine, perhaps we move this to a later meeting to see, but keep it on our, on tops of our minds if we do have funds available.
Yeah, I apologize, I was under the impression that there was money available, so I didn't mean to waste the council's time.
No, that's quite all right. I mean, I, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, but I'm going to, I'm going to play Councilman Gordon here. I just don't want to shell out twelve thousand dollars unless we got some way of covering it. Because there again, it goes back to what we just talked to Bob about. It's going to go back on our taxpayers and I, and I just can't do it.
Yeah, it has to be available funds.
Well, if we have more available too, I mean, there's the fire that probably could use more, you know, I mean, there's other, other things we could do with it too. But I mean, one of the questions I had, I mean, if we don't have twenty businesses sign up, do we get some of that twelve thousand returned back to us? Okay.
Yeah, that's what we're doing with Cambridge.
But yeah, I mean, I guess I would like to see it, if there was things, and I know we kind of talked about this last time too, that if there was things that could directly affect things that we can get and buy that will help lower taxes next year, I'd rather see it go towards things that would be for, for everybody and not just to, to help the businesses. But not that I'm, you know, I'm a, a business guy for sure, but I mean, I-
Well, that's fair. I mean, you guys have to prioritize. I think the, the time issue, I know, running into Cambridge, I don't appear on the same timeline as, everything has to be done by November fifteenth. So, that's where the coaching would have to be done. So, I think a later date is great, if there's money available, I'd be happy to come back. However, that compresses the timeline to get the coaching done. I think it's just, it's an opportunity to really send a message to your small businesses. The coaching, I mean, we're doing this as a gift. We don't need the work and I don't mean to be, you know, arrogant about that at all. This is a gift to the city of Isani. The money that we're talking about is twenty-five percent of what we would normally charge. So, so to give your businesses a four hours of coaching, I mean, we've seen, I mean, I can tell you a story after story of the impact from just four hours of coaching already. So, you, you have to prioritize everything else you have going on. I can't imagine all the things you have to think about. But for the business community, this would be an absolute boon to them as they try to reinvent themselves. Part of what we do is get people online in front of the shopping season, you know, so that they're set up for Black Friday, Christmas, all that kind of stuff to be able to compete with, with foot traffic down. So, I don't need to make my case probably anymore, but that's what we're doing. We'd love to be able to help Isani, but we will move on to the next community if, if it doesn't work out for you guys or the funding's not there.
Is that for, a quick question, is that for like corporate owned?
I'm sorry?
We have, we have businesses in town that are owned by major corporation that have less than fifteen employees.
You guys would be able to define how you wanted to do that?
Because obviously, they got money in the bank where say Jim's Donut Shop doesn't-
Correct. Yeah, you guys could, you guys could put restrictions if you wanted on certain, what type of pieces. What we're, what we're doing in Cambridge is the first come, first served, just because we don't want to put another barrier to entry for people to have to go through another application process, you know, when, when we're up against the deadline and businesses are closing every day. So, you, but you guys could define how that is or you could even have an application process where you select which people are, are receiving the, the coaching.
I guess I'd like to see us sit down and have a discussion about it and see, and meet Mr. Becker and see if there's a way we can fund it.
I think it's a great idea, but where's that money going to come from?
That's why I want to talk to Mr. Becker.
Like I said, I thought there was money available, so that was my, my bad.
Well, there was, but we already-
Do you think all those applications are going to be, use up all that money?
There was, there, there potentially still could be, but like Ms. Wood says, we don't know how many people are going to apply for that relief fund for businesses that we already put out. And maybe some of them aren't going to qualify even though they think they still might, so.
Yeah, no, I understand that for sure.
Do you think that they're going to use up all that money? I mean, based on what you see now with the application coming in?
It's going to be tight.
If it keeps flowing in the way that it is? If it keeps them flowing in the way that it is going, I would say yes. What we're seeing so far, and I don't even see all of them, I've just seen a few that went, since Sheila's been out on vacation for a few days because she's been kind of heading that up, is that people are asking for the full five thousand. There's not a little bit so that kind of, to spread it out amongst businesses. It'll be less businesses because we're asking for that full amount and if they can show proof and meet all those eligibility requirements, they would get that. So, I, I'm hesitant to say that I, if there was to be more money, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's-
Money left over, I should say.
Yeah. So, I think this is something we'd have to sit on, talk to Mr. Becker about and see if there's a way that we can do this without taking a hit.
And our application process closes this month, the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, I don't have it in front of me, but yeah.
So, then we would know more by the first meeting in October.
We would.
So, potentially, we would know- So potentially, we would know then and could say something to you, we still have, I mean, we're kinda coming into a time crunch era, but we would know much-
But, but yeah, I mean, and obviously there could be other priorities that, that emerged during that time as well, but yeah, we could circle back at that point and see.
The funds that would probably be used for something like this, because this is to promote, enhance and help the stability of our businesses would be EDA, um, which that doesn't come from the general fund. So that's a possibility, or, well, I guess it does come from the general fund, but they have their own allocation of funds. So that's, I can take a look and see where we're at in the EDA, and if that's a possibility, if that's what the council wants us to explore.
Yeah, we are, just, just so you know, and I don't understand how all the finances work, so I'm a corporate guy, you know, for the last 30 years, but uh, we are working with some EDAs, we are working with some counties, and we have reached out to Isani County leadership as well, to try to get some support. So, you know, we're working at different angles, uh, and it seems like each municipality has sort of a different way on how they're potentially getting funding.
If, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Fredland, what we'd like to do is, is to sit down with our EDA, with our finance director, close our application process, see what kinda funds are there, and then that first meeting in October, potentially just, we'll have you back and we can give you an infinitive answer.
Yep, that would be great.
Ms. Wood?
Okay, so technically speaking, at this moment, there is funding available in the EDA budget, however, we have excess funding in the EDA, um, in Fund 108, because we had allocated certain monies while Sean Sullivan was still here, he left. We ended up saving a giant amount of money, there were all kinds of expenditures that didn't occur in the, in Fund 108. As a result, right now, we're sitting at a point where we've got about $125,000 excess cash that really should at this point be going back to the general fund. That is in the presented preliminary 2021 budget, that transfer out of Fund 108 into the general fund. So unless we find a way to fill that gap, so we can reduce that transfer, we, we sort of don't have any money available, because we've already kind of encumbered it in a manner. One thing that could happen is October 1st, health insurance renewal comes along. We may very well find that we do better than we had projected, and, and there might be some funding available, but it, I would, you know, I'd need two more weeks to, to know that.
By the, the first meeting in October, though, we would know more.
It's the 6th, yeah, we should know, we should know something by the 6th.
So why don't we just, let's try to wait off till that-
Postpone this, or have a discussion at that time?
Yeah, we'll, we'll postpone and have a discussion at that time, and we'll better have our ducks in a row come that meeting, and we can have Mr. Fredland back and give him an infinitive answer.
I'm with that, or rest you guys with that?
You okay with that, council?
Sure. Okay, so I was gonna ask you, Josie? Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other items that we have, Ms. Wood?
I'd like to go back up to the pedestrian bridge.
Going back to E2?
So Katie, I'll get that image pulled up on the screen, when Jason had presented, and we'll have him speak on it, um, in twen, at the 2020 goal set, session, that there was an option of still putting it along the hotel, so Jason, you wanna explain how that could still fit?
Mr. Cook, if you could step up to this projector and kinda point your finger to the areas you're talking about.
Sure. This is gonna work here. Um, so, so here's where the, uh, hotel is now. Uh, here is that pedestrian overpass that would all been ramped up, as Councilman Lundin was saying, uh, where now that would be literally raising grade right up along next to that, uh, new hotel. The alternatives that are still, haven't been evaluated, cause this is still in that ultra preliminary stage, is whether or not we could possibly go to an underpass, um, where it would actually be ramped down through here, and then it would be more like that large box culvert type, you know, uh, underpass type of a thing. Um, and then it could come back up. Otherwise, the other option that now could be, would be to move it to the, the north side of Main Street, and then try and line it up with, where, over here now, there's the, uh, O'Reilly's and the, uh, Cobhorns, and there's the, kind of a line between their ponds that could turn out to possibly be, uh, where the trail could go, and then it get back to the line that we were gonna go. And then yet again, you can do the spiral type walkways up and down, if there's room, as opposed to the long ramp. So, at this stage, there's so many things that haven't been evaluated yet, that there's all sorts of options, but granted, the, the route or the install would probably end up being different than originally, originally planned. But, uh, at this stage, it's just, back in 2011, we were under the impression that the city had officially said, we don't want this money. So it was, you know, gone. And now they're saying, we still got it on the books, and it's on the books until you tell us we're not gonna use it.
I could've thought I, I, I thought I saw at one point in time, before I even got on council, a picture, a design, like, uh, like, like a sketch of this is what it, this is what it looked like. Yeah, that's what I saw.
Yeah, so, so the, uh, the hotel would essentially sit right in that green space.
So that's where the hotel is now?
Right here.
Yeah.
With the wall, the hotel would be right here, and these, this, this would essentially be looking in probably at the second floor of the rooms.
So what is that, what is that road then? Is that that Richards, or whatever, is that that runs next to the-
Penny Lane?
No, it's Broadway.
Broadway Street's the thing right behind it.
It's Broadway.
So that's Broadway.
There, but he's talking about where you're-
I'm talking about the one that runs underneath the thing, what does that road?
This is Penny, that's been vacant.
That's gone.
Oh, okay.
It's no longer there.
So Penny's gone now, and Richards in.
Okay.
So this road, yeah, is gone, so that's literally building now, it's right, right there.
So that, that road wouldn't be there right now?
Yeah, that's already gone, yeah.
Before, before we keep jumping into this thing any further and further and further, I got absolutely no flipping way in hell, I'm gonna say you could spend $2 million on this.
No, so just to be clear-
But this is what I was getting at, you said there was possibly some grant money, where this would be little, I wanna know what's our bottom dollar out of our pocket.
Yeah, what is the city paying for this, is what I wanna know.
Okay, so to get really a more defined number, we have to pay engineering to do a little bit more work to find out what's available for grants, because grants sound great, you can apply for them, but what's the ability for you to actually get them? There's an analysis that Bolton and Mink will do, and they are-
He knows all about that.
Very good at getting grants.
And, and I think, I think this design is outdated, I think we need to do something different.
It all depends on where the location is, if we're gonna go right in that, off of Broadway, there's not enough room for a spiral there. But there are different renderings that they can do and look into this, it's just gonna cost us a little bit to have Bolton evaluate the site.
I like, I like coming off of Main Street better.
Yeah, if we went on the north side of Main Street.
Again, possibilities, but you know, haven't been looked into, it's just-
Then this design would be okay if we went on the north side of Main Street.
It may, but then, uh, once you cross over 65, it's, you know, do we have to take a straight 90 and run it back down to Broadway? Or, you know, routes that have to get figured out, easements that have to get determined, you know?
I, what does the council think here is what I, what I-
All I wanna know is, if we pay him to engineer, re-engineer this thing before we can go apply for a grant, how much is that costing us? Where's that money coming from? And then, we could proceed maybe looking at a grant. But it, it, as it is right now, there's no way in God's green earth that I'm gonna be willing to spend $2 million on this.
I thought Councilman Gordon said to the right of me, not to the left of me.
So my question is, can we get the grant, to get engineered, can the whole thing be granted, including the engineering? I mean, what does that look like?
So, so, uh, you know, what I'm holding here is the, what I brought to the, uh, the planning, uh, or goal setting, uh, back in January, uh, where we did kinda lay out the, uh, the estimated amount we'd request, but then the fees that would go with it, and which year you have to apply by, for which, uh, construction season. So as you, you can see down this list, and each one-
I can see.
What's that?
I said, oh, I can see.
I can't see it from here myself.
Put your glasses on.
Has a different amount we'd request, a different year of construction, the earliest that you'd be allowed to try and get the money to be eligible, this one's 2023, that was 22, and, and all these would've been if we had started back in January. So no, they're all probably pushed yet another year out. Uh, but if you see, yeah, I mean, there's serious applications.
We're looking anywhere from $5,000 to $12,000.
Right, and then depending on how many we go after, you know, that, that's where that, if you tried to do all these on a list and it's all worst-case scenario, like, complex thing, we're talking $60,000 worth of application fees. And, 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 and just applications. And with that said, if we actually are able to get, you know, half of them, two-thirds of them, that's when we're gonna actually find out what the dollar amount to the city would turn out to be. Because until then, we don't know.
Here's, here's, what I wanna say is, I'm more interested in having Bolton and Mink go after, can we make our intersections quiet zones for the train over this?
I like the sound of the train.
Yeah, I, that's not a problem for me.
You know how many residents I get complaining about that train?
That's one of my favorite things.
That's, I've heard, I've heard this for 10 years.
The train is, the train's not an issue for me, but I mean, if you're hearing complaints, then I guess-
I have so many resident complaints about they blow that horn excessively. So then-
Well, that was gonna be my question too, was can we, can we use this money for something else?
So then, I would rather put money towards saying, hey, Mr. Cook, go out and see what it's gonna cost us to redo our intersections, to make them quiet zones for that train, over this.
Well, the biggest thing about the train is they have to blow that whistle through town.
No, they don't.
They don't have to blow it?
No, they have to be, it goes a quiet zone, and what that has to do is-
Then they don't blow it at all.
They have to, they have to put a divider between the two lanes, and it has to be at least three cars deep, and then, and it has to be guardrails, so they can't go around the carms crossings, so, there's, there's a way of doing it, but it's-
Before we get off this subject though, I'm sorry, go ahead and finish, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, if we have to put a lot of money, then I'm not for this either. I mean, I thought if we could just apply for a grant and have, pay for Jason's fee, the, the engineering fee, that's one thing, but to sit here and put out a bunch of money just to get an engineering-
I think at this point, what would be helpful for staff is to find out if council would like us to explore it further. I can have Justin, or Jason, sorry, rework these numbers, say here's how much it's gonna cost in engineering fees to apply for these grants and redo these numbers. There is inflation, but it's possible that there could be an entire pedestrian bridge for less than $100,000 to the city's cost. Do we wanna explore that, yes or no? If we're, hands down, for sure, we don't even care, then we will send the email and send the money back, so another project can use it. I don't think it's fair to tie up the funds any longer than we have, given that it's been so long. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but-
You're saying there's a possibility we can get that pedestrian bridge for less than $100,000?
It's a possibility.
Including Jason's fees of applying for the grant and all that?
I think we need him to tell us how many grants were eligible for, given the timeline that we're in, and might wait till next year.
That's, yeah, that's my point too.
Not to write, well, you're right, very small amount though, to write this memo, to actually do some research. Uh, what we'd really have to pay for, which is the bulk of the cost of his time, is to apply for the grants. Not to give us a workup, to just tell us what grants are possible.
You rewrite this to exact numbers, and come back and talk to us.
I do have a question for Mr. Becker, when we did this at goal setting, did we allocate those funds for this? For up to $100,000 for this, or is it, was it? Cause we, we, we exsaneed on the, uh-
This was a dead issue back with the previous mayor, cause it, because, what's his name up in Duluth didn't get re-elected, Overstart didn't get re-elected. So the funds disappeared, and that was when I was told this was done.
And I, and I think some major miscommunication happened back then, because that's what these funds are, and they're still-
Sitting there.
Yeah, and I was, we were told, we were told at that time, I think Dan, you were on the council then. We were told that those funds were no longer available, so it was a dead issue.
Well, yeah, well, I don't know if we were told they weren't available anymore, but when we decided not to do it, we assumed that the funds would just go away.
So, the records that I, I found back in the 2011 discussions, where it looked like we were kinda in the same exact boat, uh, actually as right now. We had this $2,100,000 allocated. We were talking about what other sources we could go after, and we had the impression at that time that it was gonna be somewhere more in that three quarter, $300,000, $500,000 amount to the city, if everything went, best-case scenario, and it looked like at that time it was, well, we're not gonna be okay with spending that much, even if we get all this, so we're dropping it. That's the way that, what I saw at the time. Uh, so now we're almost in the exact same conversation. Do we wanna try again to see if we can get that number down below $300,000 to city cost, and, and find out, or not? And like you said, easy to update this memo to the current years that those applications would apply to, and right now, we're really looking at a 2026 construction season, even if we're wanting to go after these, because of how all these leg out. And so, it's just whether or not we wanna just kinda keep that as an option as we figure out budgeting for next year, for even doing these applications, so.
I mean, I, I guess I would lean on you, Phil, I plan on still being the mayor then, so.
Well, I, all I'm gonna say is-
I wouldn't sign on that dollar.
I'm not more, I'm not for a half a million dollars for this bridge. I'm gonna tell you that right now.
Nor mine.
If, if, if you were talking $100,000, I could maybe see it, but I, I'm not, if this thing's gonna cost us $300,000, uh-uh.
I'm not for, I'm not for $100,000 for the bridge, so, but that was my, can, do we have to use it for this project?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I think the Highway 65 intersection is horrible for pedestrians, and if we want the side to expand and possible liquor store and other things, I think a pedestrian bridge would be a great jewel to have.
I think the numbers are outdated, I think the design is outdated, I think, everything's outdated.
Well, here's what I'm not for, I'm not for putting out a bunch of money and finding out or not, I guess, I wanna know the possibilities before we vote on.
Well, that's what he would just re-
But I'm saying even, even, is it, I wanna know like the perc, you know, I mean, you probably can't put a percentage up, but is it a good possibility, bad, you know, kind of just a mediocre possibility? I just hate to put out a bunch of money and then we find out, well, it wasn't really a good possibility anyway, it was just, we just applied hoping we might get it, so, that's all I'm saying. I don't wanna chase bad, bad money after bad money.
And that's what I'm saying, is if he redoes this menu and gets the brass facts and the numbers in there, and we come back and discuss this again, then we would know more.
But having, true, Mayor, but having said that, he will not be able to tell us that yes, you would get this grant, or this grant, or this, because you just never know who you're competing against, until that opens up and you get awarded or not awarded. So there will be a hot, there is that risk that we won't be able to get around. If, if council doesn't wanna take any risk, then the points mute, let's not pay him to write a memo.
And, and even if we just pull back what I, you know, this one, we did reference the likelihood on, you know, it's also unlikely to be awarded, you know, the specific one, if we were awarded this other one. And so you gotta kind of apply for both, but you're actually only likely to get one of them, and that's the same case for a variety of them. So we have to end up applying for a lot of them, and that's where we kinda came up with our estimated amount that we hope, you know, would be able to get awarded, even though what the total amount individually applied for was, you know, the possibility of getting even more, but we're already understanding that you're not gonna be able to get all of them, because they contradict each other in certain ways.
That's quite the gamble, that's like a roll of the dice.
Well, Chief Jankovic can now, uh, contest applying for grants, they don't always go the way we'd like them.
But it sure is nice when you get them.
Yes, it is.
Do we even wanna attempt to take this?
Well, I guess, let's, let him put his numbers together, and I guess, you know, and then, and then discuss at that point.
Yeah, but Ms. Wood made a valid point about-
We, that's no guarantee we can get to the grants, there's no guarantee to it.
That's a gamble, so we're gonna have him redo this memo, and then he's gonna come forward and say, this is what it's gonna cost us, and then, alright, well, let's, let's try it. Well, then we're paying that money for him to do all these grants, and they're still not 100% factor, we're gonna get them.
How much do you charge Jason to do the grant?
I guess that was my point, to do the whole thing.
It says right on his memo, it's five to $12,000.
Five to $12,000 depending on the grant, yeah.
If that's the case, I'm gonna say no, let's drop this. Cause it's gonna cost us probably $100,000 before we're done writing grants, and I'm guaranteed that we're even gonna get them.
And I do see what Councilman Collison's talking about, the intersection's bad, pedestrian, I mean, I, I get it, but that's spending a lot of money to take a gamble.
I guess it's a gamble for people to walk across that highway.
I don't wanna argue, I don't wanna argue. I don't wanna argue over it, but what makes you say it's bad? I mean, the only reason I say that is, I cross 65 over to Cobhorns all the time on my bike, and I hit walk, and they tell me I wanna walk, and I've never had an issue myself. And I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying I don't have a problem. I mean, I'm almost 60 years old, maybe, maybe, maybe a teenager wouldn't understand that as well as I do, but you know, overall, I, I don't have a problem crossing that.
Both chiefs in here can contest, 65 and 5 is a horrid intersection.
Okay, well then I wouldn't argue with those guys.
I sit at that intersection every morning to go to work, I can, every day I'm sitting in that intersection, I see people running the red light. And I mean full-blown red light, going north and southbound.
Have you guys had bad accidents at that intersection?
I'm not, that I can direct life with a pedestrian.
Chief Myers?
I will say when I sit at that intersection in my pickup, cars are driving by so fast that my pickup shakes, and it scares the heck out of me to see a kid standing there in a long block.
Yes.
And people with bicycles, even in the winter, get stuck in the middle there.
Though they never plow it out.
Public, public works does plow it, but it is difficult for even the skid steer to get across within the blinky light of the pedestrian safety light. I will say, though, having sat on multiple meetings at the Safe Road to School Committee, where they're trying to get grants for helping kids get to school safely and a bunch of other things that they do, it's, it's a high concern. It's a high concern that parents have. So if we're talking about the growth of the city, having a Mecca Bluebird Park, and we want everyone in the whole city to come to Bluebird Park for the splash park, the amphitheater.
We need a way for them to get over that freeway.
I think it's a great thing for safety for them.
I'm going to suggest we just have Jason rewrite that and just take a look at it then, and then decide yes or yea or nay. I mean, I mean, I was the one that suggested Josie, maybe it costs too much just to apply. Are they good or bad? And she says, well, we don't really know, but.
Just shaking the dice.
Well, if, if you want us to do that direction, it'll also give Mr. Becker time to see what can happen. We might get more information by the next call of how our budget's effective, given all the numbers. More numbers are coming in, like he said, insurance and other things. Give us time to do some evaluating financially of if it's feasible or not.
I don't think I have to ask Councilman Collison if he's okay with that. Councilman Lundin?
I just don't want to keep throwing money away into this project, because years ago it was dead. I thought it was done. I thought that money was reallocated and sent elsewhere. I just don't want to see us putting more money into it.
If we don't use it, another city will, correct?
Correct.
I think it'd be, personally, I think it would be worth Mr. Cook to go back and get us some brass facts, and, and time for Mr. Becker to work his magic, and then come back and talk about it at a later meeting. I don't think talking about it is going to hurt, then we make a solid decision when all the brass facts are in front of us. I'm not disagreeing with Ms. Wood. I mean, if the city's going to grow and we want them to cross and to go to Bluebird Park, we need a safe way for them. We need a safe way for the kids to get to school. I mean.
I'd be curious to see what it would cost us if we didn't do, move forward with any, anything right now. What, what, what kind of costs would we, if we want to do this in 15 years from now, what are we going to pay then?
Well, it's going to inflate like crazy.
One thought I just had, Mayor, is it possible for you to reach out to Commissioner Waring? Maybe the Iscany County would want to get involved with this. They don't have a lot of places to cross 65 either within the county. Potentially, there could be some partnership that we could do. It's a full school district that involves a lot of their county, and maybe they want to get involved with the safety.
I know we can't go to the school district for money.
Well, no. But the county should care about people crossing within their county, not just a city issue. It's.
We need to get our stoplight in before we, which it sounds like it's right at our fingertips at that intersection, but I, it wouldn't hurt. I can go to Council, or Commissioner Waring, by all means.
Yeah, probably be here.
Yeah, if he's here. Well, he'd be here already, I would think, but.
Could even give Brian Johnson a call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's rewrite it. I, I don't see any harm in that. Do you, gentlemen?
No, I'm all in favor of seeing what, what it would cost us. So we can look at it and say, yeah, we think it's worth it, or no, I don't think it's worth it.
And it gives us time for Mr. Becker to do his homework, time for me to talk to Commissioner Waring, and we'll get her done.
He's in there, Jimmy.
Okay.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, he did.
Anything else, Ms. Wood?
That's it, thank you.
More, more information's always good things.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Mayor, is Chief Jankovic here for a reason?
Yep, if I can have two minutes.
Step right up, Mr. Chief Jankovic.
Someone set a timer.
Your mic is off.
I've been in, I've been in communications with Josie about the CARES Act funding. I've been made aware that some money has been allocated towards the fire district, which I greatly appreciate. Tonight, I did bring an affidavit of sorts for Ms. Wood, and I also brought a little bit more detailed itemization for Mike to look over and possibly start to order some of this PPE through the CARES Act funds for the fire district. Lastly, I brought a bid from a preferred vendor, not necessarily one that we have to use for the audio visual distance learning equipment. That was a piece of that motion of sorts or resolution to allot that money towards the fire district. I have highlighted and made tabs in this quote. This quote is for all three stations, all three of our fire stations. I believe your discussion involved funding this piece only for Fire Station 1 in the city. I'll warn you that the quote is for the complete package that we had quoted for all three stations, so a much more inclusive package than what the money allot's for. So I will work with Mike and Josie per year guidelines to make this quote fit within